Okay, I call to order this special meeting of the Scottsdale United School District. Summer Brain here. It is August 6th and the time is 5:00 PM. Welcome back. I will have a roll call starting from my far right.
Jan Michael Greenberg.
Sandy Kravitz.
Barbara Perleberg.
Allison Beckham.
And Patty Beckman. All rise. Vice President Beckham, would you lead us in the pledge?
Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any board members have any changes to the agenda? Board Member Beckham?
Yes, I would like to pull consent items F, G, and H.
Board Member Beckham would like to pull F, approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between SUSD and EBIT, East Valley Institute of Technology, regarding participation of students with disabilities in EBIT's central campus programs. G, approval of the annual renewal of the Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between SUSD, East Valley Institute of Technology, EBIT, provision of career and technical education district courses, CTED. And H, approval of amendment number one to the Maricopa County Head Start Preschool Program, Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Board Member Kravitz moves. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, do I have a second? Board Member Beckham seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We now move to information and discussion items. Dr. Secar.
Thank you, President Beckman, members of the board. I wanted to give a brief summary of our, some of our preparation for the school year and, and then a report on the first two days. Obviously, very, very preliminary since it's only two days of, of school. I will tell you, the normal preparation is that when all of the administrators come back, they're expected to be back a couple of weeks before school starts, and we started out with an administrative academy for principals, assistant principals, directors, all, all district supervisory personnel. And besides the introductions and those kinds of things, we had training for them from a group of participants who went to the Model Schools Conference this summer and on rigor, relevance, and relationships, and with a great emphasis on moving our instruction to the area of relevance and rigor and with techniques, how to do that, and ideas. And so that, the group that went trained the other principals and the other administrators, and that is going to be an ongoing theme in our administrative meetings year long, is greater emphasis on rigor in the classroom, which is not more of the same, but deeper and, and more thorough. So the whole tenor of the Administrative Academy, I felt was much more gaudy and open to the ideas that we were bringing to them. I was very impressed with everybody's attitude and glad to be back. We also had our new teacher orientation. So the extra days that the new teachers had, which included their content and grade level area expertise, and, and great deal of training by our instructional coaches for those new teachers after a large session of the whole group, which this year was about 135 compared to over 200 last year. I'd like to think that the fact that we have fewer new teachers means that we had fewer of our last year's staff leaving and more stability in the district, which I think is, is a good thing. The welcome back rally that we held last Wednesday was a huge success. President Beckman spoke. Member Beckham was there and, and participated in handing out prizes to raffle winners. But it, we this year chose not to have a speaker from outside. My joke to the groups were that we listened to them last year about not spending money on outside speakers. So there's good news and bad news. The good news is, we didn't spend the money. The bad news is, they had us. And so Cabinet put together a presentation that highlighted those same areas, rigor, relevance, and relationships, as well as we added some other, some other Rs, like respect and resiliency. And each cabinet member had an area of response, talked about the definition, had some kind of program. In some cases, it was a video. In some cases, it was a personal story. And then we highlighted schools at each rally that represented those areas. So every school was acknowledged and in these various categories where we thought that they had a program or an emphasis that, that fit. I have probably never in my career had so many positive comments from teachers, administrators, classified staff, as I have had about this welcome rally. It's just incredibly heartwarming because one of the things that people liked is they got to know the cabinet members. As we told personal stories, it helped them, and it helped them put, because every, we're still new here, and, and it helped them put a face with the name that, that they were seeing. The, the teachers in their three days before school had heavy professional development for the new math adoption. Science, with an emphasis that we have with a program that we call, for elementary, that is called Science for Every Child, Every Day. And we put that out to the principals last spring and said, who is interested in being trained? And I believe 17 schools volunteered for training. Science is, usually gets pushed off as social studies, unfortunately, gets pushed off till after the ASI merit test, or is done periodically. So science every day means that they're doing experiments and so forth, maybe a couple of days a week, and then they're reading about the science, they're writing in their notebooks about it, they're studying graphs and charts. So science integrates well with ELA and math and reading, as well as the science content itself that's important. So that's an emphasis that we started this spring, we arrived at this spring to, to start this fall as well. And of course, there continues to be a heavy emphasis on social emotional learning, and there was, there were trainings on that. And then the rollout of the Chromebook computers and how to use those in the content areas. So pretty heavy three days in terms of, of training, some of it new, some of it reminders, but I think, I think that the time was used well by the teaching and learning staff and in, in bringing teachers up and getting them ready for our first day. The first day, we all, the first two days, these two days, we all visited schools. I visited 13 schools over the two days. I did it backwards. I did eight on the hottest day and five on the day that was a little more comfortable. But, yeah, I know, the, there was a normal amount of, of schedule changes and, and last minute registrations. We had one school where a handful of kids were dropped off with not having been registered, just said, here, that's your school, start school. And so the, the office staff worked through that, which was interesting. Obviously, we are continuing to check all of those numbers. Second day today was like it could have been the middle of the school year. Things were so calm all around. Congratulations to Dennis Rayler and his staff. All AC issues were resolved before school started yesterday, and we had no issues with AC.
For you.
And a lot of work was done in cleaning the campuses, doing the landscaping. The campuses that I saw all looked really good. And, and of course, the kids were there and, and for the most part, that I saw enthusiastic and excited to start school, even though it's early. So we moved forward. And today was a very nice day, very, very calm. In terms of enrollment, I've done two quick comparisons. This is only the second day, and you know, starting this early, there, and principals know that they have certain people, certain people called them and told them they were going to be on vacation. So they have some people coming in yet, and there'll be registrations coming when people understand that school started. Registrations were up today over yesterday because other districts started today as well. And so people began to understand that it's time to go to school. So our, looking at day two last year to day two this year, we're down 277 students. Fortieth day last year, now 40th day is one of the highest counts. That, as before, the high school kids start dropping out and so forth, but 40th day is, is one of the, one of the highest. We have pretty good consistency, 40th day to 100th day, but it, but it does kind of crest at 40th day. So 40th day last year to today, we're down 580. So there's room to make up each year. So if we're only down 277, second day to second day, from second day to 40th day, people come in and start showing up. So we have ground to make up. We budgeted for 600, a little over 600 decline. I think we can be better than that in the end. As, as kids start coming back, if we're 580 now, down below the 40th day, that's less, a little less than what, than what we budgeted. So I think there are some positive movements. Some of the schools that raised issues, that thought that they were going to be overcrowded, and a number of schools, I'm not just talking about one, but none of those are in the, in the realm where we have to do more than what we normally do. For example, two middle schools who are approaching 900 and asking for, for more help at 900, meaning another assistant principal, that kind of thing at 900, which makes sense to me. Neither one of them are there yet. One of them is, is, I would doubt that we'll get there. One of them might. Arcadia High School, where there's been concerns, had 1,721 students today. So that's only a couple of students over their 40th day last year. So they may grow some, but it's, they have, they have plenty of room now. When we were estimating before that it might be 1,850 or more. I doubt that they'll reach that. But anyway, we are watching that. Every day, we get a report from Cindy Bachner at the end of every day, and this is actually, this is head count, which is really important. This is not registration. And she gives us a comparison between what's in SEMAR, what, what are the registrations versus what, what is the head count. The first day head count is less precise, scheduling issues, kids around. Second day is more precise. As we move through the first 10 days, it becomes more and more accurate. In the meantime, attendance people and, and office people in the elementary schools are calling kids who are registered, calling the homes of kids who are registered but don't show up if they don't know that they're on vacation, trying to track them down, find out where they are. Are they coming? Are they going somewhere else? Some cases, they find out families have moved and haven't told you about it and so forth, but they try to track that down, and it gets more accurate. So this is a preliminary report. Overall, I would say it was a very smooth opening. I think it also helps that we only have four principals that are new to their positions. They're going around to visit principals who are in their second year, noticeably calmer, more self-assured. They know what it looks like. They're moving forward. So I was very pleased with what I found at, at those 13 campuses, and Cabinet has reported on, on the other schools as well, and there are no major issues. We still always have some issues in transportation with, with special ed. As we've worked that out because there are changes in IEPs and different requests, and they are working those out. And, and I know that Marge Rayberg went to the transportation office and sat down with Brendan Wagner, our Transportation Director, and worked kid by kid as the route, and they are working through those as well. So with that, I might make, I might, wanted to also make the announcement that our live streaming YouTube is not working due to an issue with YouTube that we discovered this afternoon after four o'clock, that they had cut off our account, trying to force us into another, supposedly, allegedly trying to force us into another account level. So right now, we are being livestreamed on Facebook, but we are being recorded and that will be, and we have, Amy Bolton and her staff have put out on all of our social media and on our website that they can find the board meeting on Facebook. So hopefully that, that won't cause a problem for people, but it will be eventually, it is recorded and so will be on our, on our website when they have that. And we will continue to work with YouTube or whichever vendor we decide to go with. And we will continue to work with YouTube or whichever vendor we decide to go with, if that's the case. So, that's, that's where we are. There were fewer technical problems than, in the schools than we had here in the boardroom.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Krikard. We move now to our discussion item B, summary of Arizona School Improvement Bonds Project of 2016, Series 2019. Mr. Gadd, correct?
Yes. Down here. Madam President, members of the Board, we wanted to give you a brief report this evening that will be presented by our financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey, relative to our previous and very successful bond sale. Very, very well accepted in the marketplace and achieving some very low interest rates because of the timing, so that's, that's good. We also have sufficient funds at this point with the, with the bond sale that we can move ahead with any projects that the Board might want to consider in the near future. With that, I'm going to ask either Phil or Megan, Bill Davis or Megan Burke, both of which are with Piper Jaffrey, to make a brief presentation. The PowerPoint, I think, is also in your packet. So, with that, Phil?
Thank you, Jaffrey. You all have copies of this handout. We've got additional copies for you, and Megan is the process. She has to, you can just take one. And we've got the final numbers packet.
Do you want them?
Yes, please. So, I'm going to try to read this and try to keep any questions.
Can I ask that you speak into the microphone?
Try to, uh, we'll try to address them and get through it.
And generally, what we would like to do is have you go through your presentation because you may answer questions that they may have during the presentation and then take questions at the end.
Thank you. Very good. Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Krikard, good evening or good afternoon. Again, my name is Bill Davis, and Megan Burke is my partner, and we both worked on the transaction. And I think what we'd like to do is just maybe start and real quick, touch on what we think are some of the high points of the presentation. On the first page, you can see the principal amount of the bonds was $54,490. It was designed to, with interest rates and coupon levels, it generated a premium, so there was a $60 million project fund deposit. You can see that. I think of note, the final maturity was out 2027, the principal amortization of this...
2037.
2037, excuse me. The principal amortization of this bond issue was structured around your existing debt in an attempt to keep it as short as possible, but also manage the tax rate according to what the district has promised, the voters and property taxpayers in the district. The average life with that 2037 final maturity, the average life is 14 years, and as Mr. Gadd mentioned, you know, the, the TIC on the transaction came in very, very low. As you can see here, the true interest cost came in at about a 2.7 percent, just under 2.7 percent. So, very attractive, very low-cost funds for the district, which ultimately saves interest expense, saves taxpayer dollars. The next slide, just briefly, illustrates the principal amortization. And with regards to Mr. Gadd's earlier comment, obviously, with the district's bond rating, they were very attractive to investors. There was significant demand, which is illustrated in this table, and that really helped the underwriter push down the interest rate, and the, the yields were actually adjusted significantly during the course of pricing, on the morning of pricing. So, it all worked out really, really well for us. The next page just shows kind of the diverse base of investors. Again, kind of it's, you know, like everything, there's supply and demand. The more demand for a product, in this case, your bonds, the better the interest rate. And investors are looking for liquidity as well, and so when you have a diverse group of investors like this, it helps in the secondary market, if any one of these investors, which they often do, needs to sell their bonds, there's a lot of other investors out there willing to buy them. So, not only for this transaction was it a positive, but going forward, having this diverse investor base is a real positive for the district.
And I think, just to add to this slide here, on this particular transaction, we saw lots of new investors come to the table and buy Scottsdale Unified Bonds than had previously bought in the past.
This next page, what we try to do here is just compare the results of our sale with recent kind of comparable, in, in most cases, school district bonds. And you can see, if you just kind of go across, it's, it's important, I mean, it gets a little complicated here, but if you kind of match off the same year with a similar coupon and then see what the yield is, and, and then ultimately what the spread to the MMD, which is an acronym for the Municipal Market Data Index, similar to the Dow Jones, it's not perfect, but it gives us an indication of where we were on that particular day. And the spread that our yields came in at versus the spread of other districts is really what you want to kind of look at. And you can see that we fared well in, in that comparison. And then I think lastly, this, I think, was a question of the Board from, from previous, and, and this just summarizes the costs of issuance for this particular issue as compared to the district's previous three transactions. Cost of issuance, including, you know, financial advisor, legal, and underwriting, the rating agency fees and everything, and so it's in terms of total dollar and then as a, if you will, dollars per thousand, par amount of, of each transaction. So, lastly, these final numbers, I think you, hopefully, you've all seen a packet of them, but it's all of the detail. You know, it starts out after the table of contents. We have a source in use.
That's right here. That's the special one. Oh. That's right. Thank you.
We prepare a numbers packet, is what we call it, final numbers, for every transaction, and this provides just all of the detail that has been summarized in, in the presentation summary. Source and use page, it shows you, you know, the sources, par and premium. The pricing page, it gets down to some of the, the coupons and yields, debt service, cost of issuance, and just, you know, basically all the details that we keep on file, the district has it on file, bond attorneys have it on file, and so this is something that we'll always come back to, so long as these bonds are outstanding, if there's a need for call features, you know, looking at possible restructurings, that type of thing. But this gives you all that specific detail. And I guess with that, we'll open it up for questions, if there are.
Any questions from Board members? Or Madam Greenberg?
On the, on page five of your presentation with the comps, the, I understand that the yield to call was used, I assume, because that was the yield to worst ratio, so that's how it's priced, but are the, are the comps comparable on the yield to maturity as well?
Yes. Madam President, Board Member Greenberg, the, the yield to call is, is a requirement of how bonds are priced, and, and not all bonds are callable. So typically, what you see is, and I believe it's the case on all of these, is the, the call option, when the bonds were sold, typically starts in year 10. So, bonds that mature in years 10 or 11 and out are priced to that call typically, if, if it's a 5% or 4% coupon, depending on the market. So, for reasons, purposes of comparison, the, those maturities are typically comparing yield to call, and the maturities prior to year 10 are yield to maturity because they're not callable and therefore priced. Now, there are situations where if you have a 3% coupon and it's callable, it may be priced to the yield to maturity, and that's why we have that distinction.
Okay. So, that actually is listing the yield to maturity for those that mature before the 10-year call?
That is correct.
Okay. That's why it's the slash yield to call.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. Okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Actually, sorry, one more question. Is it common for municipal bonds for school boards to be callable since, I assume, most school districts don't have cash on hand to redeem them and, and don't have the ability to refinance without another voter approval?
Well, very good question, Madam President. The answer is yes. And in almost all cases for the sale of new money bonds that have maturities 10 years and out, those maturities have an embedded call option. So, it's, it's the option of the district. Now, up until 2018, with tax reform, districts were allowed to, and Scottsdale Unified took advantage of this numerous times, refinance those bonds, either on a current basis or an advanced refunding basis. Now, with tax reform, we can't advance refund bonds anymore, and that would be like selling bo, refunding, refinancing bonds today for existing bonds whose call feature was in 2021. So, the, the option's out there, but you could sell, you used to be able to sell bonds today, set the money aside with a trustee in escrow in an amount sufficient to redeem those bonds in 2021. We can't do that anymore, or unless tax law's changed. We still include the prepayment option because, you know, when we wake up in 2028 or 2029, if tax law hasn't changed and interest rates are really, really low, the district will have that option to sell refunding bonds, and, and you don't need voter approval for that.
Okay.
So, you can sell refinancing bonds. It's, it's basically under the same voted authorization that we sold the initial bond. And just like you refinance your mortgage, you borrow money at a lower rate, pay off the old bonds, and now your new bonds are outstanding.
Okay. Yes, I, I was not aware that we could do that without voter approval again.
That's right.
So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Board Member Beckham?
And just as a note for you, young, we actually did that as a board in December. So, when you go to this sheet of historical calls, if I'm not mistaken, if you look under the series, the, the third one over, that was a refinance, refunding. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a question, segwaying off that.
I love you.
Okay. Just a little clarity, I've always been curious. If we, if this district was to sell an asset, for instance, that was purchased with bond money before, et cetera, any, not necessarily a school or whatever, would those proceeds be required to pay off existing debt? Or can we just, but I didn't think so. Just someone had asked me and I...
Put those in a separate fund called the School Plan Fund, and then there's legislative limits as to how you can use that, but no, it does not reduce the debt. Unless you wanted it to, it does not reduce the debt.
Board Member Beckham?
I have a couple more questions, and, and this is really just out of curiosity because of what I've heard about municipal bonds is that, and please feel free to just correct me if I'm wrong in thinking this, but I do have a question at the end. That because we are a very desirable district in selling our bonds, that there is also another avenue of selling bonds to some of the largest distributors that are out there so that you can sell them directly, just the inventory, and reduce your underwriting costs? Is that something that we should look at in the future if it does reduce our underwriting costs? Or is it distribution costs? Maybe that's it.
No, it's great. It's a great question. And, and that method of sale is typically described as a private placement or a direct purchase option. Many, over the last five years, many commercial banks have been in that market. Most of those institutional investors, accredited investors, commercial banks generally speaking, like to have maturities of less than 10 years, preferably seven years or less, or an average life. So, that's number one. So, you know, here we have an average life, maximum final maturity of 2037, so really 18 years, average life of 14, so we're kind of stretching that length. They don't like to fix that rate for that long is the primary reason. That's number one. But number two, and what's happened just since tax reform, and it's kind of a, it's kind of an interesting dynamic, if you will. As everybody knows, tax reform lowered the income tax rate for banks. And what that did is it instantly increased the yield that they were willing to buy bonds at to get their internal return requirement. So, what we're seeing today is with a bank purchasing, if you will, potential is 25 to 40 basis points higher than we would have otherwise received. So, even if we could have found a bank that was willing to buy it, the, the benefit of doing that is that you can oftentimes avoid the rating agency fees, the underwriting fees. There's oftentimes a placement fee, but it's sometimes less, most of the time, less than your underwriting fee. But when you add 25 to 40 basis points on a transaction that has an average life of 14 years, your, your overall cost is going to be significantly higher. So, where it's attractive and what's still occurring is smaller bond issues that have maturities of seven years or less, then that 25 or 40 basis points doesn't have quite the same impact because the, the bonds aren't outstanding as long, and it's that cost of issuance savings that really pays off then. So, it's an analyst, you know, it's an analysis that we look at, but it just didn't fit here.
Okay. But it was looked at?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And I guess, I want to, this is actually, I'm going to, thank Mr. Gadd for gathering the data on the bond issuance clause, and I just want to say that because we have the information now, I'm hopeful that maybe the next one that we will maybe be able to negotiate pricing on it, since now we have the data for the last four years. So, that'll be fantastic. So, thank you.
I had a quick question on your fees. I don't know, Mr. Gadd, if you can answer it. On this chart prepared by Piper, so is that the financial advisor fees and costs, you?
Correct.
Right? So, the other ones, I assume, like Bond Council is Gus Rosenfeld?
Yes.
So, I don't know if you would be the one. I think I emailed you, and I'm sorry if you can't answer this tonight, that's fine. I understand how the fees are driven by the financial advisor fees. I mean, that's typically, well, back when I used to be in this, it was like a percentage of, is it the same?
Similar, yeah.
Okay. So, the, the Bond Council fees, I was curious as if you understand how those are brought about. My, my curiosity I brought up to you was, for instance, 42 million was issued in 2017, the Series B, oh, wait, I'm sorry, the 23 million, and then the, and then we issued 42 million, oh, gosh, I'm all off, 42 million in Series B in 2017, and then we went to 47 million. So, 5 million more, and the Bond Council fees went from 23,000 to 42,000. So, I don't know, we can get back to me on that or whatever.
I think I can answer it now.
Okay. Ask Kevin.
I talked with Gus Rosenfeld today. They apparently responded to a bid from the co-op that you acquire their services from called the SAVE Contract. They, in order to get to some of these vendors, as you know from the procurement code, we use co-ops in which to acquire them. They had not raised their rates in apparently 10 years. That's what I'm told. And so, when they had this opportunity to put in a new bid to the co-op, they increased their rates substantially. That's why you see that dramatic change in the rates because of the length of time that they held rates and did not increase them, and those are the rates then available to any district. There's no difference between the rates because they're precluded from negotiating the rates because of their contract with the co-op. So, everybody gets the same rate per thousand dollars of bonds, and the difference with that amount is basically they had not increased rates in 10 years.
Okay. Board Member Beckham?
So, along my point, so when we do the next bond, we can look at going outside that co-op and looking at reducing that amount to the district. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to our next information and discussion item for C, Maintenance and Operations Override Voter Information Packet.
Mr. Gadd again.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. The voter information pamphlet does not have to be finalized until the next board meeting, but we thought it would be good if we showed you what we have so far written that will appear in the pamphlet. Most of it is dictated format-wise by statute, but it gives, give you a chance to talk to us about any changes with, within some parameters that you want to have done, along with an understanding of what the pamphlet consists of. If you, if you go to the pamphlet itself, beginning on page 16, and then there's an introductory letter from the County School Superintendent that is standard when the pamphlet goes out to all registered voters. Page 18 is kind of a key-
I think our pages are numbered differently.
We have, we have one-
On the electronic, on the electronic version.
Oh, I was looking at them, sorry.
So it'd be the equivalent of page two on the printed version.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. On page 18 or page two, depending upon which one you're on, there is a listing there of the intention, the main bullet points that you intend to spend the money on. That is a page that you decide as a board what those bullet points look like. The narrative itself is fairly fixed in terms of the dollar amount, the necessity to indicate the amount that would be disapproved if the election were not successful, the tax rate, all of those things are set. We, we put into that bullet point listing pretty much things that were provided for in the previous election in 2014. And, and that's an area that you need to concentrate on because that's what most people will refer to when they say, what do you intend to spend the money on? That's the list. And as I say, it pretty much duplicates what was there in 14. I also will mention to you that the more specificity that you place into these bullet points, the more limited you are in using those funds for maybe a different delivery model. Let me give you an example. If you said to provide a certified librarian at every school, using this as an example, that's pretty specific. If you chose to change librarians to library aides, which is fairly common now, that bullet point may be a problem because it certainly doesn't allow library services, doesn't seem to me, to be administered or offered in any other way. So the specificity is critical, that you do not get yourself into a level of specificity that, remember, this election's good for five years. That three years from now, you wish that you had more flexibility as to what the delivery model was of those services, and yet now specificity precludes you changing that delivery model. So just a word of caution when it comes to that. So that's what that page is. And when we ask you to approve the pamphlet at the next board meeting, that section of the pamphlet is up to you in terms of how you want those bullet points to be. Page 19 is frequently asked questions. We also have flexibility with this. You can see the responses are somewhat directed because of the nature of the question being very specific, but it tells you basically what we believe the accurate answers are to those questions, and that's what will be going out to the voters. Those same bullet points relative to uses of funds are also appearing there. There's one on historical tax rates on page 20, that basically the district has a relatively flat tax rate. As you know, it's extremely low, it's below the $4 mark when you look at 2019, that lower line, all of the comparable districts to us that are unified and of some size, they're in that upper graft area because they don't have the assessed valuation that the district has. Page 21, that one is kind of key. We can't, we don't have the ability to change anything here, but what is interesting is what is the average value home that the assessor believes? And in this case, it's $431,000. And so then what would be the corresponding tax bill with that home? And it would be $164 per year to support the 15% override. If you were to go to a business who, the average business is 1.3 million, that's the fourth one down, their tax bill would be $925 for the support of the 15% override. The next page would be, would appear in the pamphlet as a place for cons, for pros and cons. You have later on your agenda this evening, an approval of a text that you want to use for the purposes of patrol. They have to be limited to no more than 200 words. They are sent directly to the county school office, just as the cons will be submitted by August the 9th. And so that's, you know, that's the subject of the agenda tonight. The ballot itself is on the next page, and I think that-
If I can make a comment about that, I think that's the ballot itself. The language was changed recently by the legislature. It used to just say budget increase, yes or no, regardless of whether it was a continuation. And they allow it now to say budget override continuation, yes or no. And I think that's significant for this election.
So, Madam President, members of the board, that's basically what the pamphlet contains. What I would encourage you to do is to think about how you want to express the bullet points. And, and of course, we want to be careful that what we're now supporting from the override is in a continuing manner in many cases, and other cases maybe not. And the wording that's being used in those bullet points relative to specificity isn't that.
Thank you. Any questions for board members? Board Member Beckham?
This will come as no surprise, I like to be able to understand what I'm reading. So can I go through, and I totally understand and respect being broad, but I also want to, so I will use the terminology and tell me if this would be not broad enough, that we use examples and knowing that there could be more examples or options. So can I go through each one? Because there's a couple of them I don't know what that would mean. So maintain current class size ratios, I'm going to assume. Examples would be adding additional teachers, so that'd be teacher salaries and benefits. Is that correct?
It refers to the class size.
Student-teacher ratio.
The number of students per teacher.
Right, but you, but you're spending money here. So to spend money, that means that you would be spending money to maintain your current class ratios. It would be either if they got too large, you'd be adding a teacher.
Yes.
So you're going to be spending that money for teacher salaries and benefits.
Yes, you're correct.
Additional curriculum?
Not necessarily, because this is ratios, so it's clearly one that's intended to direct it toward class size.
Right, but if you added a fourth room, then you might have to buy the extra textbooks.
Yeah, same number of kids.
I suppose you should do it by kid, yeah.
Correct. So I'm just looking at what the uses of those funds would be, because that's what it asks for and what people want to know. And I want to be able to, when I'm asked, be able to tell. So the next one- Wouldn't that possibly come out of capital?
Yes, that's normal where you would take the equipment of a fourth room at. And when they ask the question, you're going to respond by saying 30, 30 students per teacher in grade, whatever it is, that's what that does in terms of actual implementation in the MNO budget. And, and so that's, I mean, that's what that's intended to do.
Right, that's the outcome, but what we actually spend money-
Curriculum materials is generally paid for out of capital.
So it's not going to be that, right? Okay. Any equipment, any of that, right? Okay. Maintain all-day kindergarten, that is the same.
It's all teacher salaries.
I do, because it's teacher's, so it's a bit of that. This is the one I don't understand. Continue to provide opportunities for students to deepen their understanding of fine arts and participate in athletics. What do the funds actually go to do to get that up?
Providing music and art teachers.
Okay.
And coaches.
And coaches when we didn't have it. Okay. And so is continuing emphasis on technology, technology teachers? Or is it, what is that?
But it's, it's continuing, that would be training and also probably some personnel tech, tech people, yeah.
Okay. Continuation of staff professional learning as professional development training. That's how I read that, okay. And continue to provide competitive teacher compensation is to be able to provide. So the funds go out just to make sure that you're competitive with the market.
Comparison to other districts, and hopefully we compare favor.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Board Member Kravitz?
How do these bullet points in their order compare with the order of priority indicated in the parent survey? And the community survey? Because we asked them about-
The only one that stands out to me is that the people surveyed did not have a high, did not place a high importance on kindergarten, on all-day kindergarten.
Well, I guess for me, I would recommend putting the bullet points in the order of importance to the people that we surveyed.
Sure, we can do that.
Board Member Kravitz?
Just a minor point to, well, Board Member Beckham mentioned staff professional learning. I think we are all a little more familiar at this point, maybe five years ago it was different, but calling it professional development, should we, should we change that word just to make a little more consistent with the rhetoric that we use today?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you want to do with that one?
Professional development, not learning?
Instead of staff, professional learning, yeah.
Board Member Greenberg?
So whatever we set out in this pamphlet, this is the controlling, this is the controlling pamphlet and language used for how we spend those funds. So by changing it here, we're changing it permanently, once it, once it gets published, as to how we're spending it. So does anyone have any substantive changes to this? I mean, I was thinking, the only one I was thinking was the fine arts, fantastic, athletics, great. Do we, do we want to add extracurricular activities as a potential area for spending generally, like robotics or anything like that? Or are we already limited? I mean, I don't know if there's any substantive changes that people might think this money could go towards. I don't know if the administration has any recommendations, or if everyone thinks this is fine, as is.
I hesitated originally because most extracurricular activities are not things that we pay for out of the MNO budget, unless there's, or it's very minor, yearbook advisor, newspaper advisor. Now, robotics, you've mentioned that, yes, that is, but it is, that is an accepted AIA competition now, so it is covered in our athletic supplemental pays. The, the actual robots that they build and so forth is another fee, and that would be somewhere else. And most often, a lot of those are tax credit fees, but would not be an MNO expense. So, and this can only be MNO expenses.
Right.
But, but I don't, in, with Mr. Gadd's advice of being general, we might say participate in athletics and other extracurricular activities is a broad term, and it might cover-
I mean, we never have to use it for that purpose. It's that-
But, but it allows us, that's what we're looking for.
That's what I was saying, is there, is there something substantive that we might want to broaden? But I don't, I don't know, I was just opening up.
Well, having said that, sorry, I wanted to, have we looked at districts that are comparable in size and their bullet points, their language when they go out to make sure we're not kind of missing something or?
I think you would see similar language. You know, class ratios are 65% of the budget. You're going, you're going to see them forced into some of these same bullet points because they really don't have any other options.
Unless they have had an issue, as Scottsdale did with, with the override failing and having to cut certain things, and then they come back on the, on the revote and specifically say, we will restore these things that we cut before, and then they have that. And, and we hope to pass this and avoid that situation.
Board Member Beckham?
Also, under robotics, the first thing I thought of was that became an elective, which then would be your continued emphasis on technology. So we could put robotics under that. That's not to discount that I don't, I agree we should put extracurricular, but that, just that specific one could go, since we're remaining broad, we can put that under technology, too.
But I would not, I think technology is what we want is broad, that added compasses.
No, that's the point. But that's the point. But if all of a sudden you're, you have classes that are now electives that are technology-based or steam-based or STEM-based, they now can fall under that even though it's not a fine art or an extracurricular.
Continued emphasis on tech, continued emphasis on technology covers it.
Yeah, that's what she, that's what, that's what she's saying. She's saying my example was a bad one.
No, no, I wasn't saying it was bad because it was a good one, because it's actually twofold. We have robotics that's elective and we have robotics that's extracurricular.
So robotics competition would be, robotics competition would be extracurricular. The class would be covered in, in classes and would be a technology.
Right.
You have to be careful not to say robotics.
Yeah.
Because that to some people guarantees that program continuation for five years. So that's why you stay broader.
Correct.
Stay with technology.
Yeah, we all, yeah, we all agree with that, yeah.
Board Member Kravitz?
And to very much that point, I would caution us all to, you know, keep that broad language because if you get into specifics, like even the word extracurricular, to a lot of people outside of our school district, that's like, well, that's extra. I don't want to pay for that the way they hear these terms. And you, and if you narrow down on robotics, there's going to be a whole lot of people go, what am I talking about? You know? I mean, we even have a hard time, apparently, according to our survey, selling all-day kindergarten, which of course to us is just like an absolute necessity. So, so I personally would be the devil's advocate and say, don't, don't, words that sound great to us don't necessarily sell to all of our taxpayers voting on this. I would say keep it pretty broad.
Board Member Greenberg?
No, it's okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Gadd? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gadd. We are going to move now to our consent agenda, and I move to approve the consent agenda as amended without items F, G, and H. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Greenberg, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. The consent agenda is approved without items F, G, and H.
Yes.
F.
Now, if I, if I may?
Yes.
One of the items that, did they vote?
We voted to approve it, but we-
To approve the consent agenda? I'm sorry, I must have been sleeping. So, so one of the things that, that was approved was the D.C. Ranch Association license agreement. And, and I would like to thank, we have two members of the D.C. Ranch Homeowners Association with us this evening, Jenna Cole and Brad Bishop. Together, the HOA and Mrs. Marshall worked hard at, at coming up with a solution for our piece of land there that meets the needs of both D.C. Ranch and are maintaining control of the ownership of that land. So I'd like to thank you very much for, for what you've done to help with this and look forward to a continued partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on now to our action items, and Board Member Beckham had asked that I, consent agenda items F, G, and H be polled. So item F, approval of the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between SUSD and East Valley Institute of Technology, EBIT, regarding participation of students with disabilities in EBIT. Board Member Beckham?
And actually, we can actually consolidate F and H together because it's the same agreement. So I don't know if you need to read that for the record. H, and then I'll discuss those with the same.
F and G.
Oh, is it F and G?
But we have to vote on them separately.
You have to vote on them separately.
You do. They are very related, we can talk about them separately.
Okay, and then we'll do the votes separately. Okay.
I just wanted to put into the record, the background, because when I was reading this through, I had some questions regarding the Head Start programs that we might have. And-
Not Head Start.
EBIT. Oh, sorry. EBIT, that's why I got my, on EBIT. And, let's see. Okay, so what I had asked our general counsel is just to give us a summary of the main changes in the agreement, and she so kindly gave us all a list of about four or five items, and I just would like to put this as an addendum into the record if we could, is that possible? So that when we go back, when other boards go back and see what the changes were last year, that we just have a record of it? So is it possible just to put your memo in there somehow?
So we can't add it to the agenda, but we can note those items in the minutes.
Note them in the minutes would be good. Thank you.
Okay. Do you need to read them, or are you going to just?
Would you want me to say what they are?
Sure, if you'd like to. I mean, do you feel it's important? If not, then we don't have to.
Thank you. I just summarized the main things that we changed in the agreement. The primary one being that we previously had an 80% share of the funding, and we negotiated with EBIT to increase that progressively over the next three years, starting with 83% in this first year, 1920, going to 84 in the following year, and 85 in 2021. That was our biggest accomplishment there, I think. We made just a clarification that we will maintain documents with respect to our students' enrollment documents, which we do anyway. We added a statement referencing a separate agreement, which is why there are two items regarding our students with disabilities who participate in EBIT because the member districts wanted to ensure that EBIT and all the people who participate understand all the requirements to make sure that we provide opportunities for our students with disabilities to participate on an equal base, or equitable basis, I should say, with- disabilities to participate on an equal base, or equitable basis, I should say, with the programs. And that summarizes the changes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between SUSD and East Valley Institute of Technology, EBIT, regarding participation of students with disabilities in EBIT central campus programs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. So, we move to G now. I move to approve the annual renewal of the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between SUSD and East Valley Institute of Technology, EBIT, provision of career and technical education district courses, CTED. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Board Member Beckham had also asked that H be polled, approval of amendment number one to the Maricopa County Head Start preschool program, intergovernmental agreement, IGA. Board Member Beckham?
Okay, now I'll go to H, Head Start program. And as similar, I would just like it, for the record, a background on the information because it was difficult to get the understanding in the actual agreement with all the legal language. So, I guess just to put in, into the record that SUSD doesn't currently manage a Head Start program, but they're still recommending extending the agreement with the county. And it's because we might want to start one later on. It, I'm kind of going through my notes here. Also, the second, the second area that was in question was that in the agreement, it stated that it would be extended for two additional three-year terms, yet this agreement is for a one-year extension, and that is because the county requested it, and we agreed to it. So, those would be the changes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I move to approve the consent agenda, well, it's no longer H, actually. Approval of amendment number one to the Maricopa County Head Start preschool program, intergovernmental agreement, IGA. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We move now to our action items, 6A, approval of maintenance and operations override governing, governing board pro statement. Are there any questions or discussion on the recommendations to approve the maintenance and operations override governing board pro statement? Board Member Kravitz?
Well, for trying to get what was submitted to us, I believe that we need to update for the submit.
Maybe I can give you a little background. What's in the packet, as Ms. Kravitz has talked about, is from 2014.
Yeah.
The pro statement that was used by the governing board in that pamphlet. And we've made some minor changes as indicated on the document. It's on page 107 of my copy. And then Board Member Kravitz submitted an additional one that we have both of them available to put up on the screen so that if you wanted to do some editing in that, we can follow it a little bit better, so.
I edited while I was here when I heard, learned that we needed to be, is it under 200 words?
Yes, yes.
So, I can discuss my edits, but I don't, I don't, I just didn't think what was done in 2014 reflects what's going on.
Let us put it up on the screen if we can. And I think, I think you also maybe have the hard copy that Kravitz submitted.
I don't think so.
With titled maybe figure, governing board pro statement.
Copy of your draft? I don't think we have that.
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll get it up on the screen in a minute.
I, I could. I, I will email the-
Let me see. It sounds like Mrs. Kravitz may have made a few changes since that time.
I, yeah, because there was nothing about word count. Can, I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
That's that, right? You have, Shannon, the one that you originally-
I just edited while we were sitting here since I needed to cut some words.
Mr. Gad, what's the deadline?
August 9th. It'll be this Friday.
Right.
So, it needs to be active until tonight.
Come on.
So, there we go.
This is the one that you sent originally today?
Yeah. But I needed to cut some words, so I did that while I was sitting here.
Shannon, how many words? Five or six words?
We need to cut basically four or five words.
Okay, well, I cut, I think, 20. We cut 20. More than that.
And add some back.
Did you get it, Michelle?
I haven't received it, sorry.
I have it up here. That's the first one that I did. How many do we need to change, did you say?
I believe it was five.
Okay, well, we can take our digital and print. That's three.
I'm sorry, which paragraph?
The first paragraph, after the word several, second line.
Digital and print.
Yep.
Just make a publication. Couple of options, other, you could take out and raise a family if you want. You could take out United States if you want. You could take out override in the second paragraph. You could change visual and performing to fine.
Okay, so I'm back at the, so quality public schools are the foundation of a thriving community?
These are all just suggestions.
Okay.
That I'm throwing out there for my colleagues. And at the one, two, third paragraph, second line, you could take out the word only after these outcomes are only possible. Though, I mean, that's just, you know, again, I'm not saying these are pearls.
Yeah, even in the United States, yeah, that could go out easy.
You could put U.S.
Well, you could.
Yeah.
You don't really need to say that.
Yeah.
I think we've gotten enough.
We get their international publications, where I originally put in U.S.
So, could I make a suggestion in the second paragraph? In the, in the last sentence, these funds will enable SUSD to provide visual and performing arts programs. I think because what we're suggesting for the pamphlet is to continue to provide. If, if you've cut enough words that we could add to continue to provide so that people are not coming to us saying, oh, you, we, you are committed to adding new programs.
I have no problem with it.
So, try to keep the language consistent.
If we cut enough words, then like-
So, you would like that to say these funds will continue to provide visual?
Will enable SUSD to continue, to provide SUSD to, no, cut there. There you go.
Enable SUSD to continue, to, to continue to provide. Oops.
Okay.
And I would take out, yeah, only in the third paragraph, the third-
Third line.
Third line, yeah. Right there.
If it's too many words, continue to provide. You could just use the word maintain here.
I hate to repeat words.
I know, I know.
Keeping the language consistent.
Yeah.
Again, if we take out words, in the United States is four right there, we could take out.
Well, you could take out and raise a family because many of our voters don't have necessarily family.
So, we would possibly like that?
Yeah.
If needed, if you need to take those words out.
Well, to be safe, maybe.
And you could take out the word override in the third, in the second paragraph and just make it this renewal.
Then force out and- Quite good, right? 100, so.
Again, just a suggestion.
Period. We took out in the United States.
So-
Period. Did you take out in the first paragraph in the United States?
Yes.
And to raise the whole family.
And raise a family in the United States. Did you get my email?
You took out and raise a family. Yeah, I sent it to work on, but I don't know.
Oh, okay, Cassandra. My, those edits are in, everything that I've mentioned is in what I sent you.
This is going to be the one on record now.
Yeah, we'll need to have one on record that we can then upload to, to Maricopa County.
And Guston Roosevelt. Are we good?
Um, let me see.
We've taken out what, five? Four, five?
We added two more than needed.
I've taken out five and added two.
Two, we took out.
Yeah.
Actually, there's word count.
I know, I was looking at that earlier.
It's 211 words. How many?
It's on, it's on the bottom on the left.
Oh, there we go, 211. That includes, but that includes, let me see if I just highlight. That puts us at 193.
Okay.
Can we, can we get a copy of the, I didn't re, I've never seen this, so.
199.
The only one I've looked at was the old one.
I sent you what, Sandy sent me?
Okay, are we good?
Um, do you want to, do we want to read that real quick and make sure that everybody is okay with that?
Do we want to make a hard copy for everyone to look at?
193 or something like that.
Use the whole thing.
It's got a mind of its own.
Can you send that to me, Shannon?
Absolutely. Um, right now, we are at, I believe, 199 words.
Ooh.
So, that would, would work.
Okay. Any further questions?
Are we, is that what everybody is happy with? We, because we will have to vote on the show, the vote for that.
Can you give me a minute here so I can just-
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Don't give a dramatic reading.
This is before.
I will, I, could I send that to you in the morning? Or, I think, it's on my drive, so.
I just, I'll just pop it over.
I'll send that to both you and Michelle. Would you like a copy of that as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll see how it's, we have a-
And to you as well, of course.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay.
I think board members can do individual ones as well, correct?
Yes.
They can submit individual ones?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve action item 6A, the maintenance and operations override governing board pro statement?
I send it for a second.
Board Member Beckham makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, I move to adjourn our special meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Board Member Kravitz, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. This special session is adjourned.
Board Member Kravitz?